Silence, please. And members of the public, just like to say that as a committee we understand matters under consideration tonight can be emotive. However, please be respectful of those around you in the public gallery and indeed the committee, and refrain from booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. This is a meeting held in public, it is not a public meeting. I'll introduce the officers in front of me at the moment. If one of you could just hit a microphone switch, please, get the camera on you. At the far side we have Barry Devlin, planning lawyer, next to him Lewis Jones, planning lawyer, and Elizabeth Sims, head of planning, followed by Louise Yandel, who's the area team leader for southern and western area, followed by Ruth Dovey, principal planning officer, and then Russell Morris, our historic buildings officer, and finally Steve Weaver, interim development control manager. So we now move on to the items on the agenda. Item number one, minutes, confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 8th of January, they have been laid on table for half an hour prior to the meeting, is it your wish I sign them as a true record?
Read.
Thank you, I'll do that after the meeting. Apologies for absence and declarations, Emma?
We have apologies for absence from councillors Nick Williams, Dennis Lee, Pat Frost, Michael Goodridge and Stephen Mulliner, and we have a substitute Patricia Ellis in attendance, thank you.
Thank you Patricia. Declarations of interest, Emma, part of the meeting?
Number for the meeting.
Item four, questions by members of the public, Emma?
Number saved.
Item five then, performance against government's targets, can I ask Steve Weaver to comment, please?
Thank you Chairman, yes, this item is trailing the provision of statistical information to both the area committees and the joint planning committee in the weeks to come regarding the council's performance in terms of the speed and quality criteria that are set by the government for dealing with planning applications and planning appeals. It's not been possible to get the data ready for publication with this agenda, the first one that it will appear at will be the southern and western area committees on the 31st of January and all committees thereafter, thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, item number six, application for planning permission, WA 2017 2028, Brightwell's House, Brightwell's Road, Farnham, GU97SB, and first of all I'll ask Elizabeth Sims to start the proceedings.
Thank you very much Chairman, good evening members. I wanted to start by briefly setting out the context for tonight's meeting to assist members' assessment, I will then pass over to Ruth Dovey, the case officer, to take members through the plan. ... for works largely associated with Brightwell's House on the East Street development site to include demolition of the attached extension and physical conversion of the main space. Firstly, this is not a planning application, the legal assessment concerns only the evaluation of the impact of works upon the historic fabric and special interest of the buildings and their setting. No other matters normally taken into account in the assessment of a planning application are relevant to the determination of this application. In particular, the change of use or the loss of the Redgrave Theatre, the traffic, air quality or other environmental criteria are not relevant to the assessment of a listed building consent application. The judgment, as I'm sure members are aware, is a specialist one and the council's historic buildings officer Russell Morris, who's helpfully here this evening, has been central to the officer's recommendation. As I say, Chairman Russell is present tonight to assist, to clarify any specialist matters if necessary. The NPPF and the council's emerging local plan policy include an additional test that requires any harm that is identified to be balanced against the benefits of the proposed works, and that judgment you'll see is contained within the officer's report. Secondly, there's been clearly an extensive planning history in relation to this site. Listed building consent for this proposal has previously been granted in 2008, 2011, and most recently in 2015 as amended in 2016. The current proposal is identical to the amended proposal granted in 2016. So the principle of the acceptability of the proposal has therefore been established by the decisions made by this council. So the test for members is whether there has been any material change in planning circumstances to justify taking a different decision now. Members, on page 25 of your agenda, it emphasizes that there has been no change in policy position or site circumstances that, in my view, would warrant taking a different view. The site and proposal are the same as within the previous proposal and the consent would still be linked to the extant overarching planning permission for redevelopment of the site. The law has not changed, government policy has not changed, and in relation to the judgment regarding balancing of harm against benefits, the test remains the same as was applied to the existing listed building consent. It is considered that there's been no change in circumstances to warrant taking a different approach to this balance assessment in the current case. Consequently, I must advise that it would be very difficult to defend resistance to this listed building consent proposal on appeal. Finally, Chairman, from me, the proposal is clearly linked to an important redevelopment for Farnham which has had planning permission since 2008 and the current permission is extant. The site and these particular buildings subject to the listed building consent are rundown and in a poor state of repair and in clear need of restoration. The listed building consent is a separate consent but a key component to ensuring that the site is developed properly. The site is identified in the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan and the local plan as a redevelopment site and an area of opportunity for Farnham. Together with the proposed condition that Ruth will speak further to, linking this to the main permission, the proposal will assist in restoring the buildings and contribute to the rejuvenation of this important brownfield site in Farnham. I trust that background is helpful for members, I'm now going to hand over to Ruth Dovey, the case officer, to take members through the plans in more detail. Thank you very much Chairman.
Thank you Chair. So this application is for listed building consent for extension alterations to Brightwell House to enable its use as two restaurants as part of the East Street redevelopment scheme. It also includes the demolition of a boundary wall, a toilet block and Brightwell Cottage. Taking you through some of the relevant history that Elizabeth has already touched upon, listed building consent was granted under reference number WA 2014 1926 on the 28th of January 2015 for similar works to that currently proposed, albeit the two-storey extension was slightly smaller than you see in this application. A further application to amend this listed building consent was then granted, I've got the wrong date, was then granted and that was due to expire, that is due to expire on the 27th of January 2018. So the reason for this listed building consent application is because the approved application is about to expire, but in terms of comparisons, this current application is identical to the one that was already approved in 2016 and is currently extant. In order to clarify what is under consideration this evening, section 16 of the Planning, Listed Buildings and Conservation Areas Act 1990 advises that, in considering whether to grant listed building consent for any works, the local planning authority shall have special regard to the desirability of preserving the building or its setting or any features of special architectural or historic interest which it possesses. Therefore, considerations relating to the wider redevelopment scheme such as the loss of the theatre use are therefore not relevant to the determination of this listed building consent application. Although many of you will have seen this proposal when it was previously considered by JPC in 2016, I will now take you through the detail of the site and proposals. So the site is located in the developed area of Farnham on the south side of East Street and forms part of the wider East Street redevelopment area. The site location plan shows the wider redevelopment area outlined in blue and the application site outlined in red. The shaded building in red is Brightwell House and the Redgrave Theatre attached to it. Brightwell House is Grade II listed and is currently vacant and rundown. There are also two other buildings on the site to be demolished as part of these proposals and I will touch upon the details of those later. So this is an aerial photograph of the site and you can see Brightwell House located in the centre within the red line of the East Street redevelopment area. The town centre of Farnham is located over to the west and the A31 runs to the south. So these are some photographs of the site. Photograph A shows you the front elevation of the building and you can see the attractive bay windows that it has, and you can also see the Redgrave Theatre building just off to the side which is the red brick structure, and you can also see an air republican amenity space in front of the building. Photograph B shows the east elevation of the building and this includes what was the principal entrance to Brightwell House. Photograph C is the north elevation which shows the full extent of the Redgrave Theatre with the car park in the foreground, and photograph D is taken from the west and again you get a good impression of how the Redgrave Theatre appears. These photos relate to works that are proposed around the site. Photos A and B are photos of the boundary walls that would be demolished as a result of the proposal. Photograph C is the toilet block to be demolished and photograph D is Brightwell Cottage which would also be demolished. All these occur to listed structures. So this is the existing and proposed ground floor plans. Hopefully you can see on the bottom right-hand corner plan, which is the existing plan, in the bottom right-hand corner you should be able to make out the footprint of the listed Brightwell House and the theatre is basically set to the left and above that, if that makes sense, sorry I haven't got a mouse to take you around. The proposal is to demolish the Redgrave Theatre and to put a wraparound extension in its place that would wrap around the western and the northern elevation, it would have a smaller footprint than the existing Redgrave Theatre. This shows you the existing and proposed first floor plan. The two-storey element of the extension would run across the northern boundary of the Brightwell Building and then that area of green that you can see to the side of the Brightwell Building is the single-storey element that would have a cedam roof on top. This is the proposed front elevation, you can see the single-storey element of the extension to the side and this would be modern in appearance with large areas of glazing with some wood and some bronze cladding. Between the two bays that you can see on the Brightwell House front elevation, there would be the reinstatement of a glazed canopy, there would also be the reinstatement of some hipped roofs on those bays and currently Brightwell House doesn't have its chimneys and it would be proposed to reinstate the original chimneys. This is the proposed west elevation and again that just shows you how the extension would appear in relation to Brightwell House. This is the first north elevation so you get a good idea of the elements of the extension that are single-storey and those that are two-storey and the fact that it runs across the full width of the rear elevation. And finally, this is the existing and proposed east elevation. If I can take to the demolition plan, this shows the other areas I've mentioned that are going to be demolished, so the red lines projecting down from Brightwell House on either side would represent the garden walls that would be demolished and then halfway down on the right-hand side there's a shaded grey area, that would be the public toilet that would be demolished, and then further down in the bottom right-hand corner of that demolition plan is Brightwell Cottage which would also be subject to demolition. And then to the side of that you've just got the elevation of those buildings that I've mentioned. So this slide puts the proposal within the context of the extant planning permission for the East Street regeneration scheme. So you can see Brightwell House is in the centre and it provides the focal point for this regeneration scheme with its retained gardens running down to the south. Although the application is identical in nature to that previously approved in 2016, the applicants have requested a change to the wording of condition three of that permission and the current condition reads as follows. "The demolition hereby permitted shall not be undertaken before a contract between the applicant and the Borough Council for the carrying out of the works of the redevelopment of the site has been entered into and planning permission has been granted for the redevelopment for which the agreement provides. A copy of this contract will be submitted to the planning authority for verification before any works commence." The purpose of this condition was to link the listed building consent to the planning permission to ensure that demolition works to the listed building couldn't take place until there's a confirmation that the full planning permission would be implemented. The applicants have requested that this condition is reworded as there will not be one contract awarded for the construction works and therefore in those terms the condition isn't workable. Officers have therefore devised the following reworded condition. "The demolition hereby permitted shall not be undertaken before a development agreement between the applicant and the Borough Council for the carrying out of the works of the redevelopment of the site has been completed. A copy of this development agreement shall be submitted to the local planning authority and this shall provide evidence that the development shall be constructed in accordance with Plan Permission Reference Number WA 2016 0268." Officers have looked carefully at the wording of this condition and are satisfied that this condition achieves the same objectives as the previous condition three attached to the extant permission. So if we can turn now to the determining issues, there is one determining issue and that is the impact of the proposal on the listed building. In terms of the council's assessment, the council has previously concluded that the internal works proposed do not harm the special features of the listed building or its historic interest. The council has also previously concluded that the demolition of the toilet block cottage and wall would not cause any harm to the listed building or its setting. The proposal also includes enhancements such as the reinstatement of the hipped roofs at the rear and over the front bays, the reinstatement of chimneys and the front glazed canopy and the reinstatement of the original stair internally. So coming now to the extension, the existing Redgrave Theatre was constructed in the 1970s and although attached to Brightwell House, it does not form part of the special interest of the building and its removal is considered acceptable in listed building terms. The replacement extension is smaller than the Redgrave Theatre and of more appropriate design. The council has previously concluded that some harm would result from the extension extending full width at two-storey level as it therefore competes with the entrance, the main entrance, the main original entrance of Brightwell House on the eastern elevations as you saw in the photos. However, as has been previously concluded, the harm would be less than substantial and the public benefits of the proposal would outweigh that harm. And in terms of those public benefits, they are as follows. "Securing sustainable, the sustainable long-term feature for Brightwell House by enhancing its historic fabric and bringing it back into a financially secure and active use. It would be the focal point of the regeneration scheme that would strongly contribute to the regeneration of the area and it would provide a valuable economic benefit as it provided employment in the area and attract visitor footfall both during and beyond normal shopping hours in Farnham." Turning to the previous history, it's a highly material consideration that there is an extant listed building consent and that proposal is exactly the same development as has previously been found to be acceptable. Therefore, the test is whether having regard to any change in policy or site circumstances, the current proposal remains acceptable. In terms of policy, new and emerging policies in the Farnham Neighbourhood Plan and the draft local plan reflect the objectives contained within the local plan 2002 and the national planning policy framework. Therefore, there are no significant material changes in policy approach in relation to the consideration of development on heritage assets. There are also no changes in site circumstances since the previous consent was granted. Therefore, in conclusion, officers are recommending a preview of the application as set out in the agenda report. However, I do have an update sheet to draw your attention to where we have four additional representations that have been received. And in addition to this, I've got a verbal update as we have some changes to condition six of the report which relates to the approved drawing numbers. Some drawing numbers that were added into condition six aren't actually relevant to the proposal and so it's intended that these will be removed, so I've got condition six up on the screen and you can see those drawing numbers struck through those that we intend to remove from that condition. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much Ruth. Now we move to public speaking, I ask Ann Cooper to come forward. And you know the drill full well, I'm sure, four minutes from when you start talking.
My name is Ann Cooper and I am representing 260 objectors and the Farnham Theatre Association of which I am the chairman. This application now offers Waverley a golden opportunity to demand a better future for Brightwell House and the whole regeneration project. Waverley should follow many other councils in taking national planning policy framework guidance in placing community and culture at the heart of struggling retail centres. Bishop Stortford, a market town similar to Farnham, is planning a 500-seat theatre alongside its existing arts centre. In a BBC Radio 2 Jeremy Vine programme, towns with new theatres were celebrated with Chester being a prime example. Among towns with no theatre, Farnham was named. This scheme, now so denuded of community benefits, cannot realistically justify the demolitions and the damage to Brightwell House. And not one of the NPPF alternative tests for justification at chapter 12 has been met. National Planning Policy H3 requires local authorities to consider how a listed building can be a catalyst for regeneration and we say that two more restaurants in a town that already has plenty would not attract visitors in the way a theatre would and did in the The Redgrave Theatre's exemplary success was once mentioned in Hansard. It attracted visits from royalty, Princess Margaret supported it from the start and Princess Alexandra attended the groundbreaking community production of Noel Coward's Cavalcade which was filmed for national television. This is all part of the history of Brightwell House which was rescued by its conversion to a theatre and was subsequently listed. What a history, without it Brightwell House would not be here today. Councillors, you should not use this occasion to belittle the views of objectors across the borough but should instead take this opportunity to acknowledge and respect the cultural heritage of your residents by refusing this application. The current proposal makes no attempt to reflect the history of the listed property and damages its setting. Unlike earlier listed building consents, there is no reference here to the future of Brightwell Gardens and the Bowling Green which is a very serious omission. And members, this is the third time you have been asked for a time extension on this consent, it must lead one to question the viability of the scheme. As Crest Nicholson Regeneration Limited is registered as a non-trading company at Company House with 100 shares and zero money shown in the accounts, are Waverley councillors and ratepayers protected from all financial viability? This is a significant planning matter because it is your legal duty to protect these listed buildings and any demolition, you must not allow any demolition in advance of a fully funded legally enforceable contract for the development being in place. Failure to adhere strictly to legislation, court decisions or NPPF guidance could lead to a legal challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. I did make the point a little earlier that I would like you to refrain from clapping, booing, cheering or any other form of disturbance. Anyway, let's move on please and call on David Maddox, please.
Thank you Chair, for the opportunity of speaking tonight. Before starting with my speech, the developers Crest Nicholson have asked me to say that they recognize the concerns in a number of the representations submitted. Crest fully intend to construct and utilise the A31 construction access bridge and final details are currently being agreed with stakeholders at Waverley Borough Council and Surrey County Council. The East Street Farnham scheme delivers an improved retail and leisure offering, 239 new homes including 72 in shared ownership, significant income to Waverley Borough Council, significant section 106 contributions and most importantly many job opportunities for the local community. I'm the agent to the applicant and the key points that I'd like to make are, we would like to confirm that there have been no new planning documents that have been adopted since the approval of the extant listed building consent approved in 2014. The main scheme benefits already from an existing consent and an A31 bridge consent. This is an application that is more about housekeeping to keep the listed building consent aligned with the extant consents. The listed building has a signed occupier for over 50% of Brightwell's House and its extension. The use of the building itself is not under consideration under the relevant Listed Buildings Act. Indeed, the council has already granted planning permission for the proposed use of the building for restaurants. The council has already granted planning permission for the proposed external alterations and extensions to the building and as this application is identical to an extant listed building consent, the council has already given its approval for the proposed internal works. In summary, I think that listed building consent should be granted for this application because planning permission has already been granted for the external extensions and alterations. Listed building consent has already been granted for all the proposed works. There are no material changes in planning policy or other considerations that would justify a different decision being made. And many of the objections either refer to incorrect references to the law, expired permissions or matters that are outside the scope of this application, for example on use, or relating to the wider development as part of the approved redevelopment scheme. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much David Maddox. Turning now then to the all councillor, councillor MacLeod.
Thank you Chairman. Introduction from the officers refers to the fact that this has been brought before the committee at the request of a local member. I'd like to make it clear I am the local member actually, I don't want my good friend Stephen Hill being seen as being anywhere associated with it or getting any of the blame. It also makes it clear though that this application would have come forward anyway, the officer would have brought it forward due to the application's strategic importance. This is because of the importance not just of this but of the overall Brightwell's application that this is part of. And obviously I And obviously, I agree with that as well. But the reason I asked for it to be bought forward is not to do with the strategic importance, it's to do with the point that really Elizabeth referred to in her introduction, that this application is really the fifth application to do this. The first one was in 2008, and Elizabeth listed the other ones. That's actually 10 years ago now. And we've got to, the committee should be thinking seriously, are we going to keep reviewing, renewing this? We've heard from the applicant a minute ago that it's just about to happen, but we've heard it's about to happen many, many times before. And there is a precedent for the Joint Planning Committee thinking about, should this, should be, keep renewing the same thing. In 2012, the committee was asked to renew the permission granted in 2009, the 2008 application. And in doing that, actually, they set some very firm conditions. They actually said that they would want to see, they would want to make sure it actually happened, it was actually built. They weren't prepared to actually allow a four-year extension, insisted on a three-year extension. And they made it very clear that if the project didn't actually start by 2015, they wouldn't renew it again. So why are we here? Why is this project still going? The reason it's still going is actually that Waverley actually allowed Crest Nicholson onto the site, which they actually own, in 2015 to actually implement the planning permission. They actually allowed them to dig a hole, which gave the, which implemented the permission for the bridge. They allowed them to knock down the tennis pavilion, which implemented the permission for the main scheme. So they frustrated the actual requirements, that they frustrated the intention of this committee, that this project should actually start. When the committee said they wanted the project to be built, to start, they actually wanted a real start, and that actually hasn't happened. And ever since then, this project has staggered on from one assurance that it's about to start to another one, and we've just had the latest one. In 2013, at the time of the CPO, we were told that the project was shovel-ready, and that was one of the reasons why the permission was given by the inspector to actually purchase the Marlborough Head, which has now been boarded up and nothing appears to be happening. So this application is actually an opportunity for this committee to actually, you know, show the sort of backbone that it showed in 2012, and to draw a line under this project. It would actually be a mercy killing of this project. It's time that this project was put down humanely and brought to an end, and the whole thing was rethought. And if you actually refuse this, it won't lead to an appeal, it will actually lead to the whole thing being rethought and reconsidered, which is actually what's required. So I would ask you all to think very seriously about whether you should be renewing this thing for the fifth time, you should be taking the assurance that this is going to happen. We've heard them over and over again, and it hasn't actually happened, and it isn't actually going to happen. I could say much more about this, but I'm running out of time, and I believe, Mr. Chairman, I can come back and say a few words at the end. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Members, you all should debate. Councillor Ward.
Thank you, Chairman. This is kind of like Groundhog Day, isn't it? We keep coming back, and we keep getting the frighteners put on us about we might lose it at appeal, and we keep getting told that we did it a little while ago, 10 years, three years, five years, so we have to do it again, because policy hasn't changed. Well, maybe it has, maybe it hasn't, but time's moved on. Life has changed, a lot of things have changed. At the beginning of the papers, it quite clearly says that this is part of the main project. And so if the main project is not viable, why are we here? And there is considerable feeling that the main project is not viable. For longer than I've been a councillor, which started in 2007, they've been hunting for commercial backers. They haven't found commercial ones, they've found a local council who I think is being extremely generous. But look what's changed. Internet shopping is booming, retail is in trouble, House of Fraser are asking for their rents to be cut, Argos is moving out one of the main stores in our high street, Poundland is in trouble, and the great anchor store, Marks and Spencer's, have announced that they are reconsidering all their developments, particularly their new ones, and are not prepared to publicly commit that they're going to go ahead with this. So again, I say, why are we here? Much has been said about theatres and harm and things. Let's look at the harm to the building. To be fair, the Redgrave is not a very pretty site. It's been called all sorts of horrible things, but the fact that we, as a council, have let it rot is not the reason necessarily to demolish it. However, if we are going to demolish it, we're then going to stick something else on the side, which frankly, to me, is not that attractive either. So this is meant to be, and I hear the developers say, the centrepiece of the development. Well, we're knocking one carbuncle off and sticking another one on, from my point of view, and that really is not what we should be allowing under this listed building consent. The whole situation, the demeanour, the look of that building depends a lot on the open space in front of it, which is going to be cluttered up with wagamamas and wonderful things like that, and completely spoil the setting and the view. So we're asked to balance harm against, let's say, non-harm. I would say what we're going to do to the building, looking very specifically at this listed building, what we're going to do to it is remove something that's not very pretty, yes, but we're not going to actually enhance the look of the building by what we're doing, what we're proposing to do here. Anne Cooper, who spoke about the theatre, made some very good points, that other areas, Bishop Stortford, I think she mentioned, are rejuvenating theatres and are building them. Now, if I saw somewhere where live performances could go on in town, and I have, I think on practically every time this planning thing came up, said, why, if we're going to build a cinema, that is, if the third potential builder of cinemas actually stays on board, because Odeon and View both disappeared into the undergrowth, why don't we make one of those cinemas a bit larger with some facilities for stage and for live performances? If I saw some sort of movement in this way, I could see some of this harm being reduced, but I don't. So we've kept a building, we've let it rot, we're going to knock it down, and we're going to stick something else on the side of the listed building, and we think this is a good idea. I'm sorry, developer, I just do not think this is a good idea. Much has been said about changing clause three. If I heard the words correctly, it was, the condition is much the same or has the same effect. One has to say, then, why change it? When I read that clause, I think that phrase weasel words comes to mind, where we refer to the carrying out of works for the redevelopment of the site. It's not clear to me that someone, particularly with a very, very clever QC, could not argue that the site, in this particular document, is Brightwell's house and not the whole site. So I have a huge objection to condition three. I would like to see words that the total development agreement for the whole area be referred to, and I would like it very clear that we're talking about the whole site, not just this site. Because I am deeply concerned that whilst there is somewhere in this report a reference to the bridge, this excuse for redevelopment, we also, when this permission was granted and the wooden shack on the tennis courts was knocked down, which apparently was the start of massive development, again, I find it very confusing and rather strange, we didn't insist on a bridge, and the contractor said, oh, no, 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 it's fine, we'll just take these little bits of wood out with small lorries. I see the same happening here. They're going to knock this thing down before the bridge is put up, and then they're going to say, oh, that was fine, it worked, so we don't need the bridge for the main development. So I would like to see a clause in here, very firmly reiterating the fact that a bridge will be built before this development starts. Personally, I'd rather not see it at all, but if we're going to do it, let's have the bridge first, and let's make it clear. The developer seems very amenable to changing conditions, so let's add something about a bridge, and make everybody happy, and make everybody clear what we're doing, rather than leaving it what I find really rather airy-fairy. I think that's probably about as much as I'm going to say. I mean, the representative of the developer always says he's a representative of Crest Nicholson, which I'm sure he probably is, but of course, we do forget there are other people like Sainsbury's and Waverley Borough Council in this consortium. And I would urge councillors to do as planning committees should do, put aside any feeling about Waverley, who is the, I was going to say the employer, I suppose it is the employer, it pays us allowances, and look at this as it should be, as something that is, in the wrong time, unnecessary, a bad thing for the town, and is doing more harm than good for basically the reasons that I have mentioned. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Follows.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the committee, and thank you to the speakers. As a new member of the council, this is a very large and emotive subject that's been brought before us, and I'm just trying to get to grips around the whole history of it. One of the things that strikes me is that this council's been discussing matters related to this development since just about the year I started secondary school, if you can believe that. This scheme has not, the fact that this scheme has not yet died or properly started and frankly finished by now, is actually in itself fairly scandalous, and I absolutely dread to think how much time and money has been spent with absolutely nothing yet to show for it. Be upfront, I'm a Gollumming councillor, and I'm here voting on a Farnham issue. So one of the things I wanted to do was discuss it with people I know in Farnham, some of my Lib Dem colleagues from the past who have been on this council, and as much as I could in the time, discuss it with some people on social media, on things like the Farnham boards. I was frankly astounded by how polarised opinion is on this development, seemingly divided between those who are absolutely steadfastly opposed to this, and who desperately, after this length of time, want something to actually be done on the ground for the benefit of the town. One of the things I find personally objectionable, as both a person and a councillor, is to vote against something without something viable to propose in response, and as such, I'd very much like to hear, either in this forum or elsewhere, what the alternatives actually are, and if leaving the site to deteriorate further for an unknown number of years is beneficial to the town and to the residents of Farnham in general. I would also like to hear more about the level of commercial commitment to the scheme as a whole, and whether it's actually still viable after this amount of time. I would also like to know if this chamber has the power to compel the developer to start by a fixed date at penalty of revocation of the extent agreements, or if there's anything else that we can do to actually make this happen, under penalty of stopping all of their current permission. And I'll just conclude by saying, at the end of the day, we're here to consider one very small aspect of this, and it's, as we are informed prior, a quasi judicial process which we're constituted. Are there genuine and material grounds to deny this change based from the 2016 version of this consent? I don't believe that there are, and so morally, I think my point at this point would be to have to approve this, because I'm sure it would get overturned on appeal, which would of course be then more time and cost to the public. I wasn't here in 2016, and I didn't vote for the original, and I feel because of the previous history, I'm now compelled to vote for the current one. But if we can have some answers to some of those other questions, that would be fantastic. I'd also like to just query one thing, the officers did spend some time illustrating the benefits. Do you adequately consider the harm when you're looking at this test? You mentioned harm versus benefit, and I just wanted to see if there was any comments that you had regarding the harm. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for ILC officers to answer that question, just point out that we're here to discuss the one aspect of this application that's on the listed building, not alternative bits and pieces. That will come elsewhere, I'm sure. Ruth, or?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just in response to your query about balancing the harm against the benefits, we have been in consultation with the listed buildings officer, and it has been identified that the proposed extension, as outlined in the report, and as has been previously considered under the 2016 application, would result in less than substantial harm. So we have identified that there would be some harm as a result of that extension. However, under the terms of the NPPF, because less than substantial harm is identified, we need to balance that against the public benefits that would arise from the proposal. Those public benefits have been considered, they were outlined, they have been outlined in the officer's report, and they were further outlined in my presentation. So that balancing act has been done, and it has been considered that although there is some minor harm, the public benefits would outweigh that harm.
Thank you, Ruth. And councillor Hyman.
Thank you, Chairman. We're just taking up where Ruth has left off there, with the issue of balancing the harm against the public benefits, because that's what we're here to do. I am, as councillor Ward appears to be, rather just concerned that we come along and we're told we only have one decision that we can make, we have absolutely no choice. We've heard that for 10 years. We've seen, I think it's nearly 30, planning applications come forward over the past 12 years for this scheme, and we heard the same thing every time, and look where it's got us. I don't think that I am obliged to support and perpetuate the errors of the past. I think if we look objectively at what we've got in front of us, the harm and the public benefits, then we certainly, as a committee, are more than entitled to revise our view of the proposal, given the disbenefits and the sacrifices brought about since it was last properly considered, three years ago. There have been many changes. Indeed, we are obliged to revisit our assessment of whether the benefits outweigh the loss and the harm to the heritage interest. The heritage interest of this site lies as much in the estate, the curtilage and the walls and gardens and the setting of the house, as much as in the house itself. And in respect of the estate, we're looking at total loss, total harm. That is of major significance, and I don't think over all the years that it's been given any real due consideration, and we don't have to perpetuate that. The Redgrave's construction respected that. The southern elevation, the front view of the theatre extension, is largely hidden by the copper beech tree, so you see the house from the gardens, you don't see a massive nasty bulk. It's a very functional, paid for by the public to build it, sponsoring bricks in the 70s. And the other views of the bulk of the auditorium area were always hidden by the old Art Deco cinema, other buildings, trees, and would be again with any reasonable development of East Street, which I think everybody wants. The view from the east wasn't ideal, that's where the original front door used to be, and that is due some improvement, that would be nice if we could, but that isn't being promised here. Our officer report tells us at the top of page 29, that even though there would be less, officers consider that there would be less than significant harm, I think we should consider that, the presumption against, it says, there is a presumption against granting consent, end of the first paragraph at the top of page 29. Members, I don't know that that's ever really been considered, that there is a presumption against granting consent, the number of times this has come before this committee. against granting consent, the number of times this has come before this committee. In respect of the changes that were brought about in 2016 under 16 of Bleke 0456, the variation of conditions application, that the less than significant harm supposedly in that respect is in fact an addition of a 75% increase in the first floor area. Now, you'll see on pages 12 and 14, there are a couple of drawings, they call that, and I quote, "minor". A 75% increase is minor in the world we're in at the moment, which I find a very strange one. The officer report doesn't tell us that in Heritage England's 2015 comments alongside their aspiration that the estate could be retained, the experts wanted the first floor extension removed, as it spoiled the design. But instead, it's been increased by 75%. We're told Heritage England don't object. No, Heritage England asked that this is, they have a standard response, as many of the consultees do, and they expect it to be determined in accordance with policy, the law, everything else, and that's what I hope we'll do. Now, when that change, 75% change to the first floor area, came to the JPC in 2016, the figures of 13 and 35% were put forward as the increase in the floor space, but you as members, or this committee as members, some different people, weren't given the 75% figure. The public could be forgiven, certainly, for thinking that due consideration was not given to those changes, particularly because the determination of that application took 12 minutes, you can see it on the webcast, including the officer intro and the public speaking, and no member spoke. So whether, you know, due consideration was given to what we are told now, officers admit, is a significant, they say a minor significant, but I think certainly significant in terms of what English Heritage had said about it. I think that we need to take another look and think at that again. Now, at the end of page 29 of the officer report, the end of, sorry, the end of page, the third paragraph on page 29, we're told that the benefit is that this proposal would enhance public social life. I don't understand that. This is a strange world where you can't enhance public social life with a theatre, but having a 10th café/restaurant in the development, there are nine others, but there may be another one in the retail unit that's going under D20 in the Gostrey Centre's place, I suppose, but at the moment, I think the count is 10. That's what we really, really need to enhance public social life, and of course, we know that people like Byron Burgers are in trouble, so, you know, I do beg to differ in respect of perhaps the benefits of this. How can this 10th café/restaurant be of greater social benefit than a purpose-built theatre built by the community? I don't understand where some people are coming from. Now, what we need to know in order to assess whether we are convinced, and that's what we have to be, that the benefits outweigh the harm, well, we, the harm is evident, it's evident, there's a total lot of curtilage, walls and gardens that make the estate, that's highly significant. We know the harm would be caused by large developments surrounding, massive bulk of buildings surrounding Brightwell's House, and if you've seen the model made locally and displayed by the Farnham Society, I think you can hardly disagree what I've said there. We know it was admitted finally, after many years of pointing it out, that there's a five-storey element on the, on top of the D20, right next to, in fact, to the west of the, what would remain of the green finger stretching down from the house. The shade would be there in the afternoon, it would never be a warm place, and indeed, of course, I think most people know that that would be scalped, I think for want of a better word, in order to create flood compensation, that it's going to end up muddy. The Balls Club complained that their site was muddy and that's higher up and drained, so this isn't going to be very clever. The rest of the main grass area would be almost completely underlaid by a large concrete lid of a very large soakaway that is going to be just a few inches under the grass surface. So, you know, it's not going to be, literally, it's going to be difficult to maintain, and whether it's, how nice it's going to be, crammed in with a five-storey and four-storey on one side. And you have to bear in mind that when I say a five-story, this isn't, you know, the impact on the setting of the house that this will have. You know, I bear in mind that that five-story element is twice the height, roughly twice the height, of the current parapet wall on the Lib Dem club on South Street. So most people go down South Street, they can see the big parapet down the side, that building would be twice the height, and that's going to be overshadowing this. Okay? So, but let's look at what other benefits there are. Well, there's the benefits to the house, there's the renovation, the new roof, reinstatement of some features, but that's an obligation, Waverley should look after that, we don't, we shouldn't have to be relying upon Crest Nicholson to do it, and of course, it's all being done at our expense, because it comes out of any money going to Waverley, that does, if it wasn't being done, it would come to us. The rare headline benefits, we all know, they've recently been removed, the Brightwell Gostrey Centre removed, costing us a £3 million bill and the land, or most of the bill. We've sacrificed the first view of the setting of the conservation area that visitors get when approaching Farnham from the west. The cinema, well, two cast iron prelets to view an odeon, both were supposedly guaranteed, we all know that and heard it many times, well, they weren't that guaranteed, were they, and we'll have to assume the same again, I think, no reason not to. Affordable rented housing removed all of the benefits, and we need to reconsider this, because this has happened since you last gave this due consideration in 2015, January 26, 2015. So what about the scheme itself, the plans? Well, the design's unfinished, we know that, they haven't been able to design the Royal Deer Junction pedestrianisation scheme, that's going to be done later.
Councillor Hyman, can we speak to the subject matter?
It is the subject, it's the benefits, and if we look at benefits, Chairman, if you may allow me to do so, I wish to address the benefits, and we have to address disbenefits and sacrifices and problems. You can't just look at benefits and say you can't look at any of the drawbacks, surely, Chairman. So I'm only mentioning it in that respect, that it's not been designed. How can members here assess, do their job tonight, because I can't, assessing this unless we have the problems with this scheme which haven't been designed yet in front of us? How can we do it without knowing? How can Mr. Forward, Miss Follows next to me, councillor Follows, the new councillor, have any idea what the benefits of this are in order to weigh it up? That's the job, and none of us can, because the plans are all wrong, the list of plans in 0268 only includes those which are, which were changed, accidentally omits all of the plans, a dangerous situation. We know the EIA is incomplete, we know that they have, the design of the access for the main car park, the multi-story car park, hasn't been submitted. I've told people, I've got a copy of a document which hasn't ever been put on Waverley's website from the Environment Agency, saying they expect a planning application and FRA and EIA because of the land raising in that area, that's been hidden, it's been put under a condition, but that's not the same as doing it properly. We need these planning applications to come forward, we've been told by Crest today that another application will come forward, I think that's what we were told. These need to come forward before we can assess this, Chairman. So I'm going to wrap up if I may.
Councillor Hyman, can I just ask the lawyers to answer your questions?
What question did I ask, Chairman? It's the obligatory interruptions, isn't it?
Yes, you have been talking at length, can we get to the subject matter, please, on Brightwell's House?
Sorry, I thought I'd just said that. Yes, Chairman. Well, Chairman and members, there are no real benefits, the money's gone. It's our job to look after this house anyway. We don't have the information that we need to be able to look at the benefits, they all seem to have gone. Chairman and members, this is an opportunity for us. Now, on behalf of the residents we serve, we can lay it on the line to Crest, not necessarily by refusing this application tonight, I think it might be a push to expect some people to be that open-minded, but, you know, we've got to do something, we've got to encourage Crest, as councillor Follows suggested, to produce solutions, submit those solutions they haven't been able to put forward in 10 years, because obviously they think they're not acceptable to us, let us judge them, and if they are acceptable to us, get on with it. But, you know, we have to wait, we should wait, we should not grant this really, so I'm suggesting that we should go for deferral on this and get Crest Nicholson to put forward the rest of the plans in order to complete the design of this scheme, and that's the landscaping, where the back house is going to be, the path, the design of the access to Dogford Way, and how they're going to, you know, what they're going to do with the Royal Deer Junction and the pedestrianisation. So those issues need to be looked at. Let them get on with it if they can produce those to us and they're satisfactory. My view, well, we would have presented finished designs and applications, they would have presented the designs and applications if they had, if they could, if they were any good, they haven't done that, and it's been 10 years, how much longer? But the design of this scheme must change if they're not, if they can't satisfy that. We've got to have those changes done now, we can't leave it another 10 years of messing around, not after the contract's signed, the work's commenced, if that'll ever happen. This council could take control of the issue, but that's not me or any of the opposition group or the residents, it's the majority group could take control of this issue, take control over the East Street scheme by deferring this and asking Crest Nicholson to bring it forward. It's obviously increasingly unlikely, it's an unviable commercial offer, very highly likely to challenge if work starts without due process, planning applications still awaited, et cetera. You can do this, but I'm not going to put forward a motion now for deferral, because quite frankly, if I put it forward, everybody will vote against it. I would rather hope that one or more members here do accept that they don't have the information to be able to make the balanced judgement that they need to do, there is a presumption against, we are entitled to revisit the decision. You were, not all of you were part of these past decisions by any means. There was a three-month break in listed building consent, October 14 to January 2015, so we're used to that sort of thing, it's not a problem, we can defer. I will leave it to others, and I'll just finish, if I may, Chairman, on agreeing with councillor Ward, that we need to tighten up, in view of the situation, we need to tighten up the wording of condition three. I would suggest that we have the wording that is correct, that Anne Cooper kindly put forward, fully funded legally enforceable contract for all works for the whole site, to please councillor Ward in place. And also, I see no reason, because we're being told we'd get it anyway, we want to be assured of it, to add the dedicated construction access bridge to access to the A31 before commencement of development, before commencement of development or demolition. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak for that length of time, Chairman, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. Louise, I think, please, please.
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, if we can just address the point raised by councillor Ward and by councillor Hyman in relation to condition three. We have looked at this condition, and if members consider that an amendment to this condition is necessary, what we would recommend is that this is reworded to state, the demolition hereby permitted shall not be undertaken before a development agreement between the applicant and the Borough Council for the carrying out of the works of the wider redevelopment of the site. As outlined in blue on plan number 13512TPNMP071 has been completed, and what that plan shows is the, is basically the, is the blue line as shown on this location plan here, and that would enable us, well, it gives more clarity that we are referring to the wider redevelopment before we would allow the demolition of the parts of the listed building that are proposed. Thank you.
Councillor Coburn.
I was just going to say, if we need a motion for that, I'd be perfectly happy to propose that we have that amendment to condition three, I think we're all a little worried about the looseness of the vocabulary, and that makes it very, very clear.
Councillor Ward, do I see you nodding agreement?
I would be delighted to second the vice chair's very wise proposition, Chairman.
Councillor Hyman, did you want?
Chairman, yes. The, I wondered, I'm not entirely certain of the wording we've ended up with, but I think what we've done is remove the reference to planning permissions. Well, we've been told that we're going to get more planning applications coming through for the Mayby Bridge and that sort of thing. So, you know, we know, because this is a multi-stage planning process, that there are likely to be and will be more planning applications. I think we should have that in there, we should not remove the reference to planning consents, which the developer wanted. We should put that back in and have it all necessary planning consent. So other than, if we don't do that, then I think we're on dangerous ground, because we're saying we don't need all necessary planning consents, that what we've got's good enough, and all the changes coming forward, hey, we don't care. Bring forward the changes without us having any consideration of whether they have an impact on this listed building setting and the rest of it, and we need to keep control. So I would, with greatest respect, Chairman, ask that we reinstate that, that the planning saying, all necessary planning consents. And I'd go along with councillor Coburn and councillor Ward in respect of the rest of the wording, I think.
Fine. Can I just ask the lawyers, please, for their comments?
Chairman, the test of planning conditions is essentially that they are necessary, reasonable, enforceable, precise, and relevant to the development to be permitted, and by referring to all relevant development consent, so I think you're adding a level of uncertainty to the condition in terms of enforceability and so forth, and I think it will, in my views, Mr. Chairman, be an invalid condition.
I haven't got anything further to add on that point, Chairman. My personal view is, the words that we originally suggested, which was the subject of the recommendation to amend, would strike the balance, it provides additional clarity, but it takes the point that the lawyers have raised, that the additional wording beyond that would probably reintroduce the lack of clarity. So I would recommend personally that the wording that Louise read out is the proposed amendment. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, we've heard the officers' comments, can we take a vote on the amendment that Louise Yandell has put forward for that condition? Those in favour of the change?
One, two, three, four, five.
Substances?
Two.
Two. Thank you very much, that's carried. Thank you. Continuing then with the, councillor Barn.
Thank you, Chairman, I was only going to ask whether we could actually move forward on the meeting, the dissertation by councillor Barn, it was, I didn't time it, we don't time it, we ought to have, perhaps introduce the four-minute rule.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the public. Right. Councillor Follows, you wanted to come back?
Two extremely quick points, well, a few couple of very quick points. Firstly, does this, do we have the power to defer this? Because I actually find that suggestion quite compelling. The second thing I'd ask is, can we have an explanation? I mean, I would like to be able to ask the developer's agent this question, but can I have an explanation, the councillors have an explanation, as to why this hasn't actually started? Why are we renewing this again, exactly? I'd quite like to know that. And frankly, when are we going to see this additional planning permission? Are we planning applications? Are we talking a few weeks, a few months, a few years? I think the time scale is relatively relevant to what we're doing here. Thank you.
Who's? Louise?
Chairman, if I could answer that, I think I must come back to the starting point for this application, councillor Follows, that the debate tonight is contained very much to the very tight range of issues in connection with listed building consent. I appreciate very much that there are a number of aspects of this, as a new member on the committee, that you won't be familiar with, and I would be very happy offline to fill you in on the background to this important development, but clearly, for all the reasons we said at the beginning of the discussion this evening, that they can't be allowed to get in the way of a clear decision on pure listed building grounds. And I think your questions around timing of the implementation of the scheme... And I think your questions around timing of the implementation of the scheme and the coming forward of subsequent consents probably is in that bracket, that there is discussion about an aspiration to implement the site, it is extant, it can be built out, subject to discharge of outstanding conditions and consents, and there are clearly discussions going on with the applicants about that, but it isn't relevant as such to your determination this evening, so I would have thought the most expedient thing to do is perhaps take that discussion offline with you to fill you in on the detail, if that's helpful. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Members, anyone else? Councillor McLeod, do you wish to sum up before we move to the recommendation?
Thank you, Chairman, just a couple of quick comments. I'd like to say to councillor Follows, as a new member, I totally understand where he's coming from, but I'd like to assure him and everybody, really, there's nobody here who's in opposition to this scheme that doesn't want to see this area regenerated and regenerated properly. There's just something, a great deal better could be done with this area than the application that we've got. We don't need these 20-odd shops that are going to be extremely difficult to fill, we don't need these 10 or so casual dining restaurants that councillor, the councillors have referred to. It's going to be, councillor Ward mentioned the problems with Marks and Spencer's, and I think Byron Burgers were mentioned in passing. Byron Burgers are actually in financial trouble, they brought in a firm of accountants to actually restructure their company, and they're actually closing 30 restaurants, and they're one of our alleged pre-let companies. The other casual dining restaurants are not doing particularly well either, Ascot aren't doing particularly well, nor are Card Ruchers, and Wagamama has pulled out of the scheme. So in fact, there's every, there's every reason to believe that this scheme might not actually happen, because if Marks and Spencer's pull out of this scheme, it will be killed, stone dead, and we'll be reconsidering what to do with this, and that would actually be a good thing. So that's my final comments, Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, indeed. Members, let's move to the recommendation. Recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to conditions one to six, and the amended six and amended condition three. Those in favour, please show.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16.
Those against?
Two.
Substances?
Two.
Thank you very much. Condition is granted. I don't think there's any further exclusion press and public, legal advice, no, that completes our meeting. Thank you very much.